Hey, everybody.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello. I'm gonna do some rearranging of my screens here for a second. Are we waiting for? Let's see, who we have here? Are we waiting for Jordan and? Do we have the full council here or the full tour board?
I'm not seeing Nicole.
Nicole, yeah.
Mayor, I'll run over and check.
Woo, made it in. That was a close call there. Hector just came chucking on me on my IT ability. Hello, Tura Board.
Hey, Jordan.
All right, let's hope the gods are with us tonight.
I need to figure out what's going on with my volume here, so I can't hardly hear anything. One second.
Can you all hear me okay? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's just me. There we go. Can somebody give me a test?
How about now?
Perfect, thank you.
Hello, everyone. So I see Nicole's here, so I think we can call the meeting to order at a mayor whenever you'd like.
I had to close my door. Rocket wants to join the meeting. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the town urban renewal regular meeting to order of August 6th. That's 6:02 roll call, please.
Board Member Panamorov.
Here.
Board Member Greider.
Here.
Board Member Pestizo.
Here.
Board Member Byers.
Here.
Board Member Para Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Clark.
Here.
And Chair Eris Flood.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items. Do you have any speaker request forms?
Yes, we have one as of 5 o'clock this afternoon. Mr. Derek Manzi.
Okay, and then I also see Chris Luz's hand up. So we can check in with Chris and see if his, if he wishes to speak on non-agenda item or agenda item. Let's go ahead and do that if you can, Hector, real quick, and just check in and see where he wants to queue up. Is that something you can do, Hector?
Yeah, I've allowed him to, he needs to unmute.
Hey, Hector.
Hey, yeah, can, do you want to speak on agenda item or non-agenda item?
Non-agenda.
Okay, so let's go ahead and bring in Mr. Manzi and then, and then, because he, he signed up. And then we'll, we'll move next to Mr. Luz.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
I actually did not want to speak on a non-agenda item. I wanted to speak on 3.1E. So I can happily wait until you get to that point in the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Luz, and let's, let's not, let's not unmute Mr. Luz just yet. Mr. Luz, I'm going to recognize you tonight and invite you to speak on non-agenda item. I'm sure you're aware that ORS allows us not to recognize speakers as meetings are reserved for council, but our rules are, in this case, the board. Our rules allow for speakers unheard on agenda items or non-agenda items. I'm giving you this caution because at the last meeting, you directed derogatory comments directly at people. One of them was our consultant and one of them was me. I'm, I'm confident that with as much experience as you have in these settings, that you can find a way to express your opinion, and that's what we're interested in, is your opinion. You can find a way to express your opinion without making direct comments to any individual, either in the audience or on the board or one of our consultants. So you're welcome to speak. But I'm going to ask you to refrain from making direct comments to any individual. So with that, Mr. Luz, please state your name and your city for the record.
Chris Luz, City of Phoenix. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for getting a little bit animated at the last meeting. It just upset me to hear misinformation, but that's okay. So tonight, you guys have an executive session to talk about real estate matters. And I guess that's with the old urban renewal, because the new one isn't formed yet. And I just would caution the board and everyone else that executive sessions are designed to hear subject matter that can't be, you know, talked about in public. Real estate is one of them, and it's got to stay just on topic during the executive session, just talking about a particular real estate matter and not veer off into other areas of conversation. If that happens, I would hope that someone would stop the meeting and just, hey, guys, we can't go there. It's just about a real estate matter. And of course, when you come on the executive session, as best you can, just explain what the real estate transaction was about. And that's, you can't do that at this point. At some point, let the public know what the real estate transaction you're speaking of tonight is an executive session. And that's it. Thanks, guys.
Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item 3.1. Staff report, let's see, it's Resolution 22.05. Can somebody go ahead and mute Mr. Luz? I can hear him in the background. There you go. Thank you. 3.1 Resolution 22.05, acknowledgement of fiscal year 2020-2021 audit and adoption of plan of action. Staff report?
Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Sorry, I froze on my end. Great, and I should be sharing my screen now. So Tura, like any municipal agency, is required to do a yearly audit. And we do have that final fiscal year 21 audit report as part of our agenda packet that I'm here tonight to share with the board. I'm going to kind of walk through the audit and its findings, as well as our associated plan of action that is required with this audit. I will say that our auditor, Chris Odell from Polly Rogers and Co., is here tonight to ask any questions the board may have. Sorry, to answer any questions the board may have asked to ask. And we also have Tessa Delain, the finance director for the city, who's also supporting Tura. So Hector, we may want to elevate Tessa at some point. But I'll go ahead and do the initial summary. So this fiscal year 21 audit found that the financial statements present fairly in all material specs the financial position of the agency. You know, this was called a clean finding that our financial statements looked good to the auditor. The auditor did flag, however, a deficiency in our internal controls. And really what that means is a deficiency that could risk our ability to identify fraud occurring. I'll dive into that actual discrepancy. And because there was a deficiency, we are required to file a plan of action that addresses the deficiency. And that is within the draft plan of action in your packet. So I want to clarify just what a significant deficiency means. And so it means in, you know, the typical normal course of performing assigned functions, management or employees would, could potentially not be able to prevent, detect or correct the statements in a timely manner. So this is very different than material weakness. So material witness is more severe on the scale. And it means that there is a very reasonable possibility that material misstatement could occur. So what we found in our audit is that we had a significant deficiency. And really what that significant deficiency was, was that we didn't necessarily have the checks and balances recommended when it comes to handling money. So the previous executive director was handling, was a kind of a one-man team. And so the auditor made some recommendations on how we could make sure there was some more oversight and touches on that, just to help identify or prevent issues as they occurred. So that comes to plan of actions before the board tonight. It's a part of this resolution. And that plan of action is saying to the state that us as a tour board that we will review and adopt updated financial management policies to better reflect what's going on in the city of talents. It's easier for us to do since the city of town is now in administration. So we're hoping to really formalize them within the tourist adopted financial management policies. So if the city never was the administrator, it would be easy for the people stepping in to follow the policies. So those things like financial packets every month, multiple checkpoints for processing payments, dual signature, you know, mash the basis of accounting of the city. So the city switches, we can help Tura switch. And the timing for adopting these financial management policies, we would hope to bring you a copy in September to review and provide feedback on, and then that finalized version in October to adopt. So that is the, the quick summary for it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And then Chris is here as well.
Sorry, any questions from, from the board? For staff? Sounds pretty straightforward.
And I do want to say thank you to Chris for, for giving his evening to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Say the same thing. Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Yeah.
All right. So if there's no further questions, I'll entertain them. Let's see, are there speaker request forms on the site?
I will say first, we do have a member buyers. Has your hand raised?
Okay, I'm sorry. Board Member Byers?
Thank you. Just popped my hand up. You didn't miss me. I just wanted to ask our new Tura ED, if in addition to the items outlined in the actual plan, which I'm really excited to see, if there might be some potential additional layers of transparency we can add, just as best practices. This is a new request. I'd love to see a brainstorm of those potential additional transparency layers at a September meeting, if possible.
Thank you, member. I think that's a wonderful idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead. Great, great comment, Member Byers. Let's go ahead and call for the speaker heard on the agenda item. Hello, Mr. Manzi. Please state your name and your city for the record. Mr. Manzi, are you muted?
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So I think what I want to say is just going to, you know, dovetail nicely into what you guys were just discussing with regards to better transparency on the audit process. So I had a whole thing written out. I won't go that deep into it. But basically, my thing that I wanted to speak on was these two letters that you guys included in the agenda minutes, looks like, or a packet, page eight through, looks to be eight through 12. So the company that you had do the audit, these letters were dated February 8, 2022. I went through the agenda packets, starting from the March 1st meeting all the way up to just prior to this meeting and couldn't find those anywhere. And it seemed like that's something that should have been included since there was a significant deficiency that they noted in here. And I did want to mention that specifically. I was just curious if the board has had any discussions on that deficiency that was noted and, you know, what options are being discussed. And it sounds like one of them, obviously, is some transparency stuff. But this sounded more like it was revolving around, you know, budgets and having a little more transparency on how the money is being spent and things of that nature. Thank you.
Mayor, you're muted. Sorry.
Hey, Mr. Manzi, please state your name and your city for the record.
Derek Manzi.
City of talent. At least that's what he said before, so. Okay. Member Panamorov?
Yeah, thanks. I was, when Member Byers was speaking, it reminded me that another problem that we have experienced during the transition is that there were some broken links, I think, on the website. So it was difficult for folks who may have clicked on a meeting minutes link, get that 404, no file found. I believe those have been fixed, but that's one question. But I also wanted to know, because I'm excited about the new city website coming out. And I was just wondering if there would be more user friendliness in the future Tura website, because I think that helps transparency a great deal.
And I'm happy to speak to that. I will say what happened with the video links and with the meeting minute links. So the previous executive director used Google as his basis for all the storage file. And when the transition occurred, that Google Drive was shut off from access. And so what Hector did, and thank you, Hector, is he manually went through and re-downloaded and re-uploaded all of the links using the, we use Microsoft here at the city. So now using that different file format. So that is why those links were cut off. And thank you, Hector, for putting in the extra evening and weekend hours to make sure they got back up and for filling in all the public records requests we received for specific meetings. So that is awesome. As to the city website, I'm speaking a little bit with the city manager hat on right now. You know, staff is currently working on developing content for the website. With the, you know, recent tour conversations going on, capacity has been limited, just keeping up with everything. But it will come to the board, the tour board at some point, if we would like to have the Tura page either hosted on the city website through that new website or somehow linked to the current website, which is through Wix. So that'll come before the board for that input and the design.
Excellent. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Hector.
Member Greider?
Thank you. Hoping, this is a very quick question. Just while we're on the subject, there was a question about the calendar on the website. Has that, is that also kind of capacity related or just wondering?
And I apologize that, you saying that email out loud is reminding me of that email right now. So the current city website's calendar is a mystery on how we can update that one. The new city website will have a fully functional calendar.
And just, just for, you know, general public knowledge, when we're talking about broken links and links that had to be rebuilt, those were links that were sent to the city as part of the transfer, right? The links that were already sent to the city. Okay.
I would take the files.
Yeah, the files. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's my technology kind of weakness is not, not knowing all the terminology. Okay, so great. Well, and did you, did I hear you say that it was rebuilt as of now?
I'll check with Hector. When I went to click on a link, that particular link did work. Hector, do you want to fill us in on progress to date?
Are you referring to the broken links on the Tura website? Excuse me.
Yes.
Yeah, so I spent quite a bit of time downloading the video files and then re-uploading them to the Tura website. So they should function at least for all the meetings of 2022. I do, I have not touched the meetings for 2021, but that would just require some more time. And I think John, John is the one who built the, the current Tura website, right? So it would just start from his start date to present.
And then that reminds me of something that I, I think the city took down all of the links from pre, prior to John. This was back when Sandra Spellessy was a manager and Zach Moody was, I think, the, like the assistant director or something. And, and then they were, is it possible for us to recover some of those other links that were taken down? It was sort of taken down without a thought, without approval and that I recall. I could be wrong. If anybody remembers it differently, please speak up. But is there any way to put those back on at some point in time as time allows?
And Hector, I can take that one. So just to be very clear, both from the tour agency standpoint as well as the city, is we do have all records for public meeting minutes. Either when the city was the administrator of Tura, the transition over to John and now back with us. So those are always available. We have public records requests and they are in our file. And Hector, you know, our goal as a city is to make as many documents as available online as possible. And I'm sure that we're going to share that same goal with the agency. So yes, as time allows, we will make sure that our, you know, history is up to date for people to find. And that's one of the reasons why the rollout of the new website is taking so long, because we're trying to identify all those improvements and all that information to have in the most clear way possible.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I, I know we're not required to do that, but I, I think it's been a hallmark of, of the city going way back to have those records maintained online. So people don't always have to file a records request. I know that, I know that anybody can get a record with a records request, but anything that's made available just makes anybody's research easier. And so I appreciate that. But I also feel for Hector and really appreciate the hard, the hard work that Hector is doing. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? I just have one. I just have one before we jump into this, because it might affect the potential motion. I feel like there is so much misinformation that being circulated and there's so many personal attacks being made that it would serve us to take take another take another look at all of the processes and the procedures and make sure that we have the documents in place, et cetera, et cetera. And I know you guys are burdened, but on some level, I just sort of want to like settle everybody's concerns and questions about the transition, about what happened between when this, you know, the, the work that happened between when it was the city, then it was John Magarza's organization, and now it's back to the city and just take a backward look at that work again. Is that is that something we could queue up, Jordan? And if it is, how would it impact the motion, do you think?
You know, I don't think that that type of work would impact the specific motion. All this motion is doing is acknowledging the fiscal year 21 audit that we've received, which is our final audit. And then taking the necessary steps in the eyes of the Secretary of State to really submit and wrap up that audit through their lens. I think, you know, doing a review of, of the transition and the documents and the records is always a great thing to do and something that I know myself and tested the line, the finance director are doing just for our own familiarity and knowledge of the tour records. You know, it could be great to get since our capacity is slightly limited, is we could go outside and have someone else help run that assessment and present a report to the board and to us. Could be a way to help that move along faster than just Tessa and I doing the review.
That's a good idea. And I also think that, I mean, because John, when healthy, sustainable communities took the, I mean, this is sort of like, like a legacy, right? So when when the urban renewal agency went to the city under Tom Corrigan, the transfer was not good and the transfer of documentation was not good. And at least that's how it was described to us. And then, and then from Tom's management to the next city manager, it was also challenging, but not as challenging, because it was still under the same agency. And then when it went from the city to healthy, sustainable communities, he had some of the same concerns that the transition was difficult. So I mean, I think just making sure that we have all the nuts and bolts in place. The community talks about wanting to see, you know, access to those to those records, those ones that we can provide. And, and then just, I think, having some assurance at some point in time that everything else that they don't have access online as easily is also in order. So I, I support it and I, and I hope the rest of the board would support that as well. I just think it's a good idea and I think it'll quiet quiet some of the rhetoric and also create reassurances for our community. I would, at least I would hope. All right, well. Then we can, we can address that after the motion, if it's not going to make any difference to the motion. Member Panamorov?
That you just answered my question, whether that would be something we could just talk about and get consensus on after the motion. And that, that sounds like a good idea or do another motion.
I'll leave that recommendation from the staff if they think they need direction from the board to do that. We'll do that. If not, we'll just take a consensus. All right. So if there's, are there any other questions on this item? I'll entertain a motion. Member Perry Miller?
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution 22-05, acknowledging the fiscal year 2020, 2021 audit and adopting the associated plan of action.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2020, 22-05, acknowledging fiscal year 2020-2021 audit and adopting the associated plan of action. Well, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Board member Panamorov?
Yes.
Board member writer?
Yes.
Board member Pesezo?
Yes.
Board member buyers?
Yes.
Board member Perry Miller?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clerk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. One comment I do want to make is I'm kind of, I know we just changed over to cash basis accounting, isn't that right? Or no accrual basis accounting with the city, right?
I will say the city, the city is currently cash basis. You know, within the next two-year period, we'd like to switch over to modify the accrual.
Yeah, great. So are, so we're getting, we're, we're going to put Torah in that. Are we in that as well, right? We'll be?
Yes, we will. We will have to be the same basis of accounting as the city. Yeah.
Great. Okay. Very good. If the next item on the agenda is item 22.06, excuse me, 3.2 Resolution 22.06, Approval of Bylaw Amendment Regarding Legal Advice Staff?
Yes. So this is coming from the request of the board of just to put some things in the bylaws that clarifies the process for requesting legal advice. And in particular, the process that I would follow as executive director, if the board had a question. And so what we have done is that we have very much just copied the exact same language, just in the city's rules of procedure for obtaining that legal advice. As a reminder, as the board has a request and I translate that request over to the attorneys. Part of the information that gets shared back with the board is how that request is worded with that communication was so that you can be fully informed of their response and to what question they're responding.
Questions or comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Member buyers?
Yes. I move to adopt a resolution 2020, I mean, 22-06, amending agency bylaws regarding legal advice.
Second.
We have a second. A motion and a second to adopt resolution 22-06, amending agency bylaws regarding legal advice. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
For them, Panamorov?
Yes.
Or number writer?
Yes.
Or member Pesezo?
Yes.
Or member buyers?
Yes.
Or remember Perry Miller?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clerk?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is item 3.3, an overview of a monthly financial packet. Staff?
Yes. So as you know, part of our plan of action and moving over to the city's financial management policies is that we will start presenting to the board a financial packet every month for you all just to review, have oversight and have the opportunity to ask questions. So because of the transition, we're still working for the, with the accountant to reconcile the May and the June actions that the, that the agency have taken. So I'm going to give you example reports today to walk you through to them, so that when you do receive them, you can be familiar with them and how they work. And then they will start showing up regularly at our meetings. So I'm going to go ahead and just do a quick overview. Feel free to ask questions as we go. Can you all see? Not the slideshow anymore, but now a budget to actual report? Perfect. So one of the things that you all will get every month is a budget to actual report. So that will show you is the budget. So how much we expected to either earn in revenue or expend in expenditures? And how much has been spent to date? Since July just ended, it usually takes us about two weeks to reconcile everything. So come mid-month, we'll fill those in and you'll see over time how much is remaining in certain line items. This is a really good tool for you as a board to see oversight in the direction we're going as an agency. And if we need to make adjustments partway through, if we're over-expending or under-expending in certain categories. Any questions on the budget to actual report?
I just have a comment. This is very similar to, and Tessa, maybe it's even from the time when you were working with the city. It's really similar to a report we used to review and the sort of the ongoing being able to see the ongoing expenditures compared to our budget is really, really helpful. And I'm really glad to see this coming back. Will the city be adopting this as well? Oh, my God, that's great. Good.
And this is a big thank you to Tessa Delain, who is our new finance director for both Tura and the city. Introducing this kind of stuff.
Fantastic.
So the other thing, and something that together is going to be a regular check register or checklist. This is for you all to take a peek at individual transactions that happen. So you know, when they were posted, who they went to, if there's any notes involved and how much it was for. This is something that the board can use to ask very specific questions about why certain expenses were made, certain purchases were made. And then we can also do, as you can see here, it lists the amount and when they occurred. We will also be including a reconciliation report, which is where we actually, so that was, you know, our general ledger, the list we keep track of compared to what the bank is showing. So if anyone ever wanted to do a double check across to make sure that things are matching up, that would all be available for you to look at. And the bank reconciliating will also show you the total amount in our various accounts. Any questions on the checklist or the bank reconciliation? Beautiful. And then the last but not least, you know, and this is not yet our final form, but to also for full transparency, will also show not only our all back of the step. So the way funding works here at Tura is we keep, you know, almost the majority of our money, it was called the LGIP, a local government investment program. And then every month, as we write our checks, we know how much we want to spend, we transfer money from that account into our bank account where we have our checks written and sent out from there. So this report will show you what's going on in that LGIP account. Where our total is, you know, it's a little backwards purchases is income we've made. And it's gone into that account and then any transfers that we do out of the account. This one's a little vanilla because it's happened in June, so not much happened there. But you'll be able to see, you know, our, our invest, our interest coming in for that month. Any other monies coming in, et cetera. So this will also be available for you to ask any questions and see just the flow of the money for the agency. And that will be the total of the agency packet. The financial packet. So wanting to note, because our meetings are the first week of every single month and we usually can't do kind of the previous month's reconciliation until mid-month. So if we continue with our current meeting schedule, you know, you will be looking at the month prior. So if all our ducks were in a row, this month, you would be reviewing the final numbers for June. And then next month, we'll be reviewing the final numbers for July 6th, 4th. If the board is interested in moving our meeting date to later in the month, we could be giving you the financials of the previous month. So I'll leave that one. You know, that's an ongoing question. I'd like to have the board. I would like to move our meetings to just before city council meetings. So that we kind of localize for you all, as well as for staff, just one evening a week that gets given up for both Tura and council. So we'd love to open up for that discussion if the board's interested in having it.
Well, my, my comment is that we used to do that. And I thought it worked really well. I think the only downside was sometimes we, you know, if we went long and it would you know, folks would be waiting for us to start a council meeting, but, but it also, I think, benefited folks. Because we were, you know, we were taking care of two sets of business all in one night. I just, I just think it was easier to kind of track that stuff. But I think we set our meetings for like 45 minutes. And sometimes it felt like it was super rushed and we didn't get to review all or talk about all the information that we were getting and that, that, that I think was kind of problematic. Member writer?
I find study sessions very useful. And did you schedule them when you, when you were doing it that way? Did you just schedule those other nights or?
At one point in time, we had, we had one study session before a meeting and then a regular session before a meeting, if I remember correctly. Member Panamorov, does that sound right to you? I think that's how it used to be. And I, yeah, I agree about study sessions. I'm a big fan.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add I too am a big fan and I was begging for a couple of years ago, I was begging for study sessions and and there was much less appetite at that time. So I also remember having the term meetings before. I think that works fine, except I will, I'm in the same camp as member writer that I really appreciate having study sessions before the city council meetings and I'd, I'd like to see those be regular. So I'm not sure.
Member Perry Miller?
Thanks. I would be hesitant to stack too many packets and meetings on top of each other. I feel really grateful that we have time for reviewing Tura and then another full day to review stuff for council. I would not be opposed to moving the meetings later in the month. And I will just say that I know that the city of Medford kind of just reserves Thursdays. They have their council meetings on the first and third, and then they have their MIRA meetings on the fourth Thursday and I would be willing to sacrifice another Wednesday rather than trying to do Tura one day and then council the next day at the very beginning of the month. But that's just my preference and I can be flexible.
Any other comments? Member buyers?
If that is the route we go, then it has to be the fourth Wednesday of the month, because we have Parks and Rec on the second Wednesday.
I think you're muted, but I'm going to assume that you're calling on me. Yeah, the typical time for the Urban Forestry Committee is on the second and fourth and or fourth Wednesdays. That's not the best time for me. I see pros and cons to doubling up on the same night. I mean, I think there obviously are pros and cons. But I would I'd be willing to I'd be willing to go that route if that's the majority folks want to go. I can see some real benefits in that, both for scheduling our own time and members of the public having ease of attending and following the city's business.
Member writer?
Yeah, I also see pros and cons both ways. I do think, for me at least, things look a little different when we're doing them in person versus virtual. So I, I agree with not stacking too much in one evening. But then I'm thinking if we are in person, maybe just get there, be there and then handle everything. So I guess that's sort of still an unknown that keeps me from making a decision.
Member buyers?
I have to say, I like, it would be amazing to have one full week a month that is not scheduled for all of the other evening commitments that I have and right now we're looking at losing that.
I, I agree. It's, I, sometimes it's just overwhelming, you know, and but yeah. Jordan?
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is let's just keep it at the first Tuesday for now. And then maybe when we are ready to transition back to in-person, we can revisit the scheduling at that time. Getting head nods. Okay.
Yep. And then also I would encourage us to, when we have big items, since our meetings are at six, if we could you know, keep, stay on, I think we've done a few study sessions before our meetings. And that is just so, so helpful. So just maybe one of the, one of the good things of keeping it on Tuesdays that we can preserve, preserve that. And having 30-minute study sessions ahead of time to when they're needed. Great. That's awesome. All right. Are there any other comments on this? I think we we're good to go. The next item then would be 3.4, which is Progress Report on Gateway Visioning Project by Sal Azar. by Salazar Architect. And it's good to see you again, Vijeta, and, um, staff report.
Yeah. And before I jump in, I just want to, you know, let Chris know, Chris, feel free to sign off. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, but we will jump into the presentation from Vijetta Wasar, our architect, with architect, pardon me, who has been working, um, on the Gateway Master Planning Project. So with that, I will hand it straight over to you. And Hector, can you please give Vijetta the sharing ability?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Hector and everyone. It's so nice to see, you know, familiar faces again. It's just like home sometimes. Uh, so, uh, I am Vijetta Chowdhury. So tonight I am going to present the progress report on behalf of Salazar Architect Team. And Hector, can I share my screen yet? It's look like I can.
I just him, heard him yell yes, so that must be a good sign.
Can everyone see my screen? Oh, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
I, I can't see my screen. That's weird. Just, uh, that for a moment. Okay, uh, is that okay if I turn off my camera? It's just easy to focus on the presentation? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so, uh, here is the first page and now you're looking at our project schedule. And, uh, we are kind of end of our schedule right now, uh, kind of middle of our schedule right now. So end of this month, we are going to submit the final study report to the City of Talent and Tura. And, uh, tonight, uh, I will walk you through, uh, the three, three main themes, uh, that we have done so far. The first theme is, uh, the some pages from the draft report. Uh, the second one is Tura Master Plan Consider Design. And the third one is three feasibility design studies for the talent gateway site. Uh, so let's get started. So, uh, here you can see the index page of the re- report. Uh, we basically laid out the format like a storybook rather than I know a typical report. Uh, we started asking why the project is important, how the process started. And then we talked about the fascinating character of the city of talent and its forward and, uh, it's forward-thinking, uh, you know, uh, people. And how they are kind of, uh, raising from their, uh, city from the ashes. So that's kind of a theme we have so far. And, um, uh, here you can see some sneak peeks from the pages. So we started talking about the, I know, uh, site articulation. Then we talked about the devastating fire and the property, uh, we lost and how we are rebuilding, uh, this project, you know. And also the, the amazing network system talent already has and also some hidden opportunities we found there. And, uh, we are trying to, you know, talk about all the stuff we have seen there. And also we talked about, uh, the blessing, uh, talent has, uh, related to nature. And of course Beer Creek, uh, like agricultural farm. And, uh, that has a, you know, uh, also, you know, some economical, uh, like a small businesses, business leaders. And of course, the workshop and engagement process that we did. Uh, and here you can see that the amazing and energized and passionate images from this workshop. And, uh, it was really, you know, uh, kind of important, uh, for us to, uh, you know, listen from the community people, uh, and the way they shared their knowledge. Because the design we are proposing, uh, is kind of driven by their voices. You know, we did not put anything that we are thinking, but it's more like a what, uh, we have received uh, feedback from them, uh, you know, and, uh, that basically, uh, without doubt, you know, this all collective responses helped us, uh, develop our design concepts. So, uh, that was kind of a first theme that I talked about. Now I am moving forward to the second theme. Uh, now I am, now you can see the, the yellow dotted boundary that is City of Talent and the green patch that is the Tura boundary. So, uh, probably you most, uh, you know, you know, like last, I think June, I presented three options, uh, for the Tura Master Plan area. And I received some great feedback from you all. And, uh, we tried to synthesize all the informations and datas and feedbacks that we got from community engagement process and from you. And we tried to translate it all the, you know, insight through our, uh, design process. So here you can see, it's just giving you a little, you know, um, recap. Like, uh, we presented three different options. One was based on nature. And then other was based on, you know, community and art and entertainment, uh, you know, uh, focus, uh, design. And the other one was based on, uh, housing and businesses. For, uh, tonight's presentation, we combined all three concepts in a, in a single scheme. Uh, so, uh, here is the new concept. Uh, still, uh, we are presenting like a doodle format because, uh, we appreciate your feedback. And after we get that feedback, we will, you know, uh, draw like, uh, you know, architects drawing or engineers drawing, you can say. So, uh, just to clarify thing first, like the purple color you are seeing here, all the purple colors are basically showing for the mixed use, uh, high-density housing. And all the blue colors are commercial, retail and art entertainments related projects. And the yellow patches are either residential, fully residential. That could be single house, that could be townhouse, that could be leafwork, that could be anything. But it does not have anything related to retail or commercial or art in- entertainment related. So that's the four-color scheme we have followed throughout our design scheme. So that's just a kind of a recap, what we have. Uh, so, uh, looking at this scheme, you can see, uh, we basically proposed some mixed-use housing. You know, uh, high-density housing, uh, by the Valley Road because, uh, that's the commercial corridor. So our, uh, plan is, you know, uh, like we want to really promote talent as a place to leave, work and play while, uh, also meeting the current and future housing needs to the community. Uh, and along the West Valley View Road, it is a commercial corridor. So we basically focused on this area as a financial hub on the, of the talent. So, uh, we create, created a dense, fast-moving mixed-use development alongside, you know, uh, the, um, the Valley Road and also, you know, uh, extended, it's extend beyond this road. Uh, so here you can see, you know, some purple patches that is basically showing mixed use. It means the ground floor will use as a commercial purpose. And, uh, first, second floor, third floor, or maybe fourth floor could be used as a residential purpose. And all the blue purple patches here, it's the full building. It could be two-story or could be one-story, could be dedicated for the art and it turned entertainment community. It could be the maker space, it could be the, uh, you know, space for, uh, small community gathering, maybe community pool, maybe open a theater area. So it's all the things kind of, you know, related to, uh, entertainment and art. And the dark blue patches here, you can see is for the retail and commercial. It could be, um, you know, corner groceries, it could be bank, it could be co-working spaces. So that's kind of a, uh, you know, scheme we have. And also we looked at the streets because talent has kind of a small, uh, city character. And also, uh, that city, uh, has a, you know, important historic, uh, historical integrity. So we try to, we are trying to keeping these two images together. So in our next slide, we basically proposed, uh, some street-driven design. So here, uh, can you see my, can you see the images or it's too small to look at? Okay, I, I feel like it's okay to look at. Okay.
Yeah, we can see him good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so in this page, we are basically closely looking at the street level details. You can see the vibrant talent with a large number of people on the street engaging in all types of activities. And that was kind of our, uh, you know, like, uh, uh, main focus. It enhances the street's walkability and public spaces, uh, through the use of street, uh, store for, uh, storefront users. You know, here you can see, you know, uh, store for, front spaces basically using for maybe cafe, you know, or maybe just, you know, uh, uh, talking to your friend or neighbor, you know. So you don't have to buy, you know, uh, from the store just to sit there and talk, you know. So it's more like a pedestrian-friendly zone. And also you can see there is a buffer. So, and also we use buffer as a pollinator, pollinator buffer rather than, I know, a fancy, uh, trees. So because cities are not just for the human cars or bikes, it's for bees and bugs and animals also, you know. And talent already has that kind of humble quality. So we are trying to keep this humble quality as much, much as we can. Uh, also, uh, added, you know, lots of bike paths throughout the cities. Uh, also, uh, we, some places we basically propose double, uh, you know, way bike lanes. And that bike lanes, you know, could be safe for skids or maybe safe for dog walk also, you know. Uh, so, uh, dedicated and safe bike lanes, uh, buffered by the parallel car parking. Here you can see there's some parallel car parking option we have offered, uh, throughout the design. And also, uh, uh, some, as I mentioned, you know, sidewalks, uh, buffered by the pollinator netty plants gives people a sense of safety. Uh, so, uh, and also, you know, it's basically reduce a scale down the city scale, you know. Because if you just plant a tall trees, it's, it's basically gives the city, uh, kind of, you know, huge scale. And now you feel very, very, uh, little in the city. But talent has kind of a small, small scale quality. So using, uh, you know, more sharps, netty plants, pollinator, it, it keeps the city scale the way it is right now, you know. Also adding some, you know, canopies, yeah, awnings, you know, uh, windows that has kind of a human scale. You know, uh, just, just keep the same sense that city already has. Uh, moving towards the third themes, uh, third theme basically focusing on the gateway site itself. So I just forgot to mention the Tura Boundary, that yellow dotted area, probably fifteen to twenty acres. Uh, and, uh, for the gateway site, feasibility, uh, uh, area is much smaller. It's, I think, four point something acreage, but it has three different parcels though. Um, so we just looked at some quick zoning analysis and, uh, look like, uh, it, it falls under highway central business district zone. Also, we used, uh, this site for the, you know, uh, mixed-use residential you, uh, unit. We proposed, so we also looked at residential multifamily high-density zone analysis, uh, zone, uh, zoning code. And also, uh, you know that part of the, uh, site basically has overlay with old town design district. So we are basically continuously looked at three different, uh, zoning code and, uh, trying to figure that out, you know, how we could, uh, you know, use this, uh, as concisely as we can. So, uh, uh, just to, uh, make a note, like the height we can, maximum height we can get for the, for the site is thirty feet. And, uh, if we want to add thirty feet means three-story building. But if you want to add one more story, like a forty feet, then we have to use the top floor as a residential purpose. We can't use the top floor part of the, you know, commercial purpose. Uh, so that's kind of a, uh, one trick, uh, we got to know when we are, you know, researching on the zoning code. And also for the ground floor area, we can't use the whole ground floor area as a residential zone. We have to use fifty percent of the ground floor area as a commercial use. And the, the, uh, you know, site front is like a street frontage of the site. We have to, uh, you know, provide storefront or commercial purpose that has kind of a visually, you know, uh, very legible, uh, people can, you know, uh, see what's going on beyond the screen. I think that's the one thing, uh, we have noticed when we visited, uh, talent. Uh, I think talent is very small. So if we make some ground floor level, uh, you know, more transparent, more clear, it will be, uh, it typically build trust, you know, because when you see what's going on beyond the screen, uh, skin, it just builds some kind of trust instead of putting, you know, brick or wood, uh, you know, on the, on the skin of the building, uh, especially for the ground floor level. So that's just a, you know, humble note, uh, to remember. So, uh, this is our first, uh, first concept. So we have three concepts for the site feasibility, uh, sorry, gateway feasibility area. And still, uh, you can see we, we are using very doodle, uh, in a format. And it is intentional, uh, because, uh, we are not proposing any design. We are proposing our progress, you know, we are sharing our thoughts. And, uh, from our feedback, uh, we will add layers on it, uh, for, you know, to our final report. So starting with the first, uh, uh, concept. So, uh, we are, uh, for our three concept is very consistent, you know. We proposed commercial, uh, and retail spaces along the, you know, uh, South Pacific Highway and Valley Road. Uh, and, uh, when I am saying commercial and retail, uh, for the ground floor area, it's all will be commercial and retail. For the first, uh, for the first, second and third floor area, it could be residential. And here, uh, you can see, uh, the talk under means, uh, we propose some area where people can, you know, park their car and, uh, near their residential unit and then go up. And that could, uh, helps, uh, for the accessibility, you know, uh, uh, that could re- reduce some kind of an accessibility issues, especially for the senior, uh, people. Uh, they can just park their car here and take elevator and just go up. If we are, you know, uh, thinking about, you know, um, proposing like a providing senior housing top of this, uh, uh, you know, resident, uh, commercial unit. And inside of the, of the corridor, we propose some, uh, single-family housing, town housing, ADU. It could be, it could be triplex, it could be duplex, it depends on, uh, the budget we have. Because for the triplex, uh, it's really hard for old people or maybe, you know, who has, uh, you know, access, like a accessibility problem to use the stairs. So if we are proposing triplex, it could be, uh, you know, elevator, a served building rather than, you know, walk up like a stair serve to building. Uh, so also, uh, we propose some bike lane, uh, dedicated bike lane and, and should be protected. Because that bike lane basically by the South Pacific Highway and we have experienced like it's a super busy highway. So, uh, if, uh, you know, there's a bike lane, so it should be protected. So we protected that bike lane, uh, designing some, uh, you know, parallel street parking. Because, uh, perpendicular part parking would be, uh, very space, uh, consuming. And I think that would be not, like, we think that would be not the safest way to park your car rather than, you know, just parallel parking and it gives, uh, you know, bike are kind of a safety feeling. And then, uh, you know, the, uh, residential unit, like townhouse or maybe small retail you have here. Also, uh, as I mentioned in my last slides, like we basically proposed, uh, some outdoor cafe and dining areas in front of the, you know, uh, commercial area. And also, uh, here we find some dead zones, you know, by the basically, uh, stormwater treatment pond and the street. So we propose some food truck and, uh, you know, late night dining area zone, you know, uh, could have, you know, uh, potentially, could potentially, you know, keep it here and activate this dead space as a energized space. Uh, and also we have that storm, uh, stormwater, you know, treatment pond. And, uh, whoever, you know, will be staying here, they can just get the view from their, you know, uh, windows or maybe balcony. So that's kind of our first option. First, first concept, sorry. And we keep the existing road the way it is right now. For the second option, it's kind of similar, but it does not have the continuous commercial and retail space. You can see here, we have some space and that space could be used as a outdoor dining area or maybe a public art space, you know, or maybe, you know, some, some art fair could happens here, you know, so it's an open space or people can just go there and see. I just visited, you know, New York, the way New York designed their small pocket is very interesting. They basically put some native plants there and put two benches there, people sit there, people can sit there and just open up their tiffin box and eat food from their tiffin box, you know, they don't have to buy from the store. So, so that space basically opens up lots of opportunities. So here, we offered some ADUs in front of the commercial spaces. We offered some two and three-story residential houses. We offered some, you know, triplex and duplex here with dedicated car driveways. It gives a small village kind of feeling, who will live there, they will find very safe and they will find that's their home, you know, because it has that kind of, you know, very safe and sense of belonging kind of activities like, because the buildings, the space are kind of, you know, buffered by the big buildings. So that, that area could be less noisy, so people can find peace there. So most of the buildings, that's why we basically design inside the courtyard rather than facing on the, on the street, you know. So here also, we have the same, same thoughts for the putting, you know, some food trucks or small vendors stalls, you know, by the pond and energize that area, you know, for sitting, walking, some pollinatorial path, artwork path. Kind of, you know, meandering pathways rather than, I know, asphalt, asphalt, you know, street. And also, every, every options we have, we propose basically bike paths and parallel car parking by the South Pacific Highway just to create a buffer. For, and also this, this option also, we keep the existing road the way it is right now. For our last option, we basically proposed a new street. And we found if we proposed new street, then we can get more units, a more dense residential units here. And it's kind of, you know, connected like a straight, straightway connected with the, you know, specific highway and valley. So that street does not have to be meandered through the, you know, through the site and maybe, you know, we can, you know, put some kids playground here, you know, by the, kind of, you know, hidden behind the big trees, you know. So, and also it creates some kind of, you know, private and public zone. Because you can see, we divided that area in a two, three big chunk with two are, two big street. One is for the car parking, sorry, car driving pathway and one for the, like, you know, traffic. Like, like people can, like, drive through, they don't have to park here, people can drive through, you know, this side. And also everywhere we put a kind of speed bump because we are assuming it would be a residential unit. And people, you know, have keyed and they can play here and it should have kind of a sense of, you know, should provide sense of privacy. I'm sorry, sense of safety. So that's why we have, you know, provide a speed bump everywhere. And also here, all the retail space by the big streets and all the residential's, you know, hidden behind the big buildings. But the all themes, like all three concept, we have big commercial building that could be three, four-storied. And all small buildings, residential building that could be two or three-storied. Could be stairs served, could be elevator served, that depends on the budget and also surface parking. So that's kind of our common themes and also we provide the community space for dog walking, community space for playgrounds. So wherever you are seeing this green patches, it's all community spaces. And we are keeping, try to keep the, you know, stormwater treatment pond as it is right now. And we can, you know, use as a duck pond also. And all the walkways we have proposed that has kind of a pollinatorian pathways and also propose some artwork pathways. So it's not just a pathway. So when people walk there, they will have some kind of experience. So that I have so far. And I am happy to, you know, answer if you have any question and I am ready to get some feedback from you all.
Comments or questions? Feedback? Member Panamara?
Thanks. So this is, this is really fun. So thank you so much. I, I'm wondering about the, the, the third version seemed to have more of like a thoroughfare going through it. And I'm not sure, I was reading it. Yeah, so this is, I'm just wondering, would that be, you know, kind of encouraging through traffic more so than the other versions?
Yes, yes, it is. But also, you know, every, every concept has their own drawbacks. Like when we are encouraging traffic through the site, it create noise, it creates, you know, pollution. It's not safe for the keys and whoever will be, you know, staying there, sorry, living there. But that is kind of another option, you know, so we were just looking at, I don't know how many options we looked at, but we just thought, you know, it would be fun to look at if we use in a thorough road. Just getting some feedbacks from you all, like what you guys are thinking about, you know, it's not like we are proposing and we are for, for this concept.
Yeah, I, I just, I think that if I'm reading these correctly, I would, I would want to lean towards encouraging less auto traffic through the site. But there were elements of all of them that I liked. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please, councillor Beers.
Thank you. So I realize these are conceptual renderings, the details are not decided yet. And I am suggesting some details to potentially be included as an option for a final design. And I, I love all of the community space that is included in this, the options to gather the outdoor dining areas that are planned in. And I'm wondering if it's possible with the final design to have included plans for reducing the heat signature in a lot of those open spaces, either via, either and/or via permeable paving options. And perhaps, I mean, we, we are a tree city, but it takes trees time to grow. Perhaps planning in options to put up shade cloth during the hardest, hottest times of the year to also bring that heat signature down for people spending time outside. I, I think that could be very supportive of businesses that are trying to do things outside, be they artisans at a market or restaurants with tables outside or whatever that may be.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Because when we are basically, in this moment, as you mentioned, is very conceptual living. So all the surface parking you are seeing here, this kind of a permeable, you know, concrete block, it can grow grasses in between this, you know, pavers. So, but, you know, I think that all valuable you just mentioned. And I forgot to mention, you know, in our, you know, master, sorry, tour urban planning area, we basically proposed one climatic shelter. Like that could be used as kind of when heat waves come, you know, people, most of the people probably don't have, you know, ACs there, they can just go there and, you know, be there for three, four hours and kids can play, you know, on the courtyard and it's kind of, you know, courtyard-friendly building. Like it will have a big courtyard in the center and buildings surrounded by this courtyard and, you know, parents can go there, walk from, because we are kind of encouraging walk from home nowadays. So parents can take their kid, their kids can play in the courtyard and they can walk and then come back. And that could happen in the summertime, but in winter time, it could be a food shelter, you know. So, so it's kind of a reusable, resilient, you know, community spaces. And it could use as anything, you know, but in the summertime, we are thinking more like a climatic shelter.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I, I do encourage effort being put into thinking of all of the open pedestrian space as a potential to bring down heat traps in our community.
Thank you so very much.
Member Byers, member Clark?
Yeah, appreciate member Byers comments there. And I think shade sales, installing something like shade sales on the front end would do a lot to, you know, help generate business activity and just activate the site with people who want to hang out there because it's not as hot and it's shady and it's beautiful. Yeah, I also kind of had that concern about the third option and the traffic flow. I think, you know, less, less traffic through that site is going to be better. I don't hear there needs to be traffic flow through there. So, and also, you know, I know most of the, the infrastructure through that site is underlying under the existing road. And I, I assume it's in our best interest to, to stick with that sort of general pattern on the site. But I do, it does, did look to me at least at first impression that this option three had a little greater density of housing or at least it looks like that. And that's a priority. It is a priority of having, you know, a, a significant quantity of, of housing and affordable housing on that site in the long term. And just, I, I see the vision, recognize the, the beauty of the vision of the bike path protected by on-street parking. I don't know how, how much pavement space do we have available to implement that on South Pacific Highway? Have, yeah, it's just some, some concern about that. I love, I love how it is, looks from the user experience there. But just one concern there and trying to think if I had any others, if, if I remember it all, come back to it. But those were a few quick impressions.
Thank you so very much. That is, you know, super helpful. And yeah, we also had a concern about, you know, proposing bike lane. So what we did, we basically like protected bike lanes, we proposed inside our site rather than, you know, on the, on the highway. So that was kind of our proposal. And then car can park, you know, on the highway. So that is the proposal. We know there would be some kind of, you know, struggle to get some, you know, space from the, from the highway, that's for sure. But that is super valuable. Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback? All right. Well, thank you again for coming back and giving us a preview. We look forward to the next step and hope that we provided you with a little guidance. We sure had a great experience with your community engagement piece of this. So much so that I understand our neighboring community has suggested it as a possibility as well. And then, you know, also just really respecting the work that you had done in Medford as well. So thank you for a really great process and we look forward to the next step and hope we gave you some good, good feedback today.
Yeah, thank you so much. Councillor?
Yeah. Um, I'm sorry, I just, I just remembered the one thing I did want to ask is, I'm not sure if, if your company is familiar with, you know, climate-friendly area requirements coming down from the state.
We have heard that, yes. We have heard that, especially for Medford and Talen, because we are working with some projects in Medford area. So yes, we heard that.
Great. It would be nice to know if the, to what extent these designs help check some of those boxes and support some of those, those concepts.
Yes, absolutely. A big yes. Yes. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you again. We really appreciate you visiting us tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All right. So the next item that we're moving on to is item number four, items from the chair, the agency members. Anything? Chair of, or anything from any of the agency members? I do just have one comment before we go into executive session, if I may. Because I noticed there's a lot of attendees here tonight and I just want to, in case anybody's here for the urban renewal plan discussion, that really happens tomorrow at the beginning of the discussion with the city tomorrow at the city council meeting. That'll be the opportunity for us to hear from the city as one of the agencies or one of the jurisdictions that this plan could impact. And, and hear the response from, from the city. So that, that will be tomorrow night. And then the rest of the process, just for those who are listening, Jordan, if you could just run through it really quick and then, and then we'll, so if anybody wants to hang out for just past executive session, they can. But if, if they're waiting for something that isn't on tonight's agenda, we can let them know what, what to expect moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, the Tura board role in the urban renewal proposal has been finished. So now all conversations about urban renewal are occurring at the city council level. So the next few meetings I'm going to list are all going to be city council-specific meetings. Um, the meeting tomorrow will really be the city's presentation on how we believe it will impact the city's financials and the city services. And that will just be an information sharing with council. On August sixteenth, the city council will have a special meeting at five thirty PM. And at that special meeting, they'll review any of the written feedback that we have received from tackling districts. And they will review that feedback, decide, you know, if they want to take the recommendations, if they want to reject the recommendations or if they want to modify the recommendations as per the urban rule process. And the next day on August seventeenth is going to be the public hearing specifically for the urban renewal plan. And the public hearing is, you know, the chance for the public to come and formally comment in a meeting atmosphere. And there's potential for the first ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance to be read. And then on August twenty fourth will be the final special meeting, which would be the date for the council to decide to read the ordinance a second time and then vote on it. If they vote for it, the plan gets implemented. If they don't vote for it, I'm sure that they'll then be next steps identified. And all that jazz. Any questions from the council, or sorry, on the board about the process for city council, considering the urban renewal plan?
Member Brighter?
Bernie, could you just confirm the time is five thirty on the sixteenth and then the twenty fourth, what time?
Is going to be five thirty as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I hope, I hope that's, I, I appreciate the fact that we've been able to reiterate kind of where we're at in the process of this ongoing process each time we meet. So I think it's helpful for people who are attending and, and I really appreciate you giving that a few minutes. So if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and, and adjourn into, I mean, go into executive session.
Yeah. So Chair, I will put up on the screen the script for you to read. Just FYI, and then I'm going to go ahead and in all of the board members' email inboxes should be a new link, which is the link that you will click on to enter executive session in this technology-based world.
Okay, so I will call that the next item on the executive session is item number five. The Talent Urban Renewal Agency Board will meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two E as in Edward to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real estate transactions. The Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent will now meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero The urban renewal agency of the city of talent will now meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero two. E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real estate property transactions. Representatives of the news, media and designated staff and other persons. Shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will not be included. Representatives of the news media specifically directed are, are specifically directed. Not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session. As previously announced. If you are a representative of the news media who would like to attend the session, please raise your hand now. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. So Hector, is there anybody from the media here tonight?
Mayor, I'll, I'll watch the attendees and I don't, I don't see any names that are recognized, but I'll, I'll wait a minute after you guys have entered executive session.
Thank you. So we'll just wait for our link to go into the executive session.
And it should be in your inbox now. If you don't receive it, I'll stay on, actually, I have to go in, but Hector can help you access it.
So we have to, we have to leave this zoom, right, in order to enter another one, like literally leave it.
You'll be automatically kicked out. For all folks viewing, please hang tight here. We'll come back to this link when we're all done.
So, question, Jordan? And maybe I don't know, I, I just wondered, I think Chris Love said something like we're supposed to say what real estate. Property we were talking about after executive session?
I think the only thing you could do is if you decide to have a board make a decision. A decision gets made outside of executive session and it will be just like last time where you say. You know, we offer as you manage to make a counter offer on this property and we'll say the address of the property.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, Gaines, all here, hello? Hector, we, I mean, my memory is that we don't need to record these since they are provisioned those two.
Yes.
Needed, but you confirm?
That's correct. Executive sessions are not recorded.
Perfect, and we will not hit that button and I'm going to share screen.
Just to assume that Kristen Mays was in the audience.
So if you don't mind me giving me a minute.
I can do that, Jordan.
I already have it queued up, so listen to it right now.
Gordon, I'm going to send you an message really quick. But I understand, I understand we're audible. I'm getting a text from somebody who's in the audience that says we're audible to the audience.
Oh, great. Had to reach the tree fully sign out.
Right. Six. Was that everybody? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Member Byers?
I move to authorize the executive director to make a counter offer on 202 East Main Street and execute the purchase agreement as discussed in the executive session.
Second.
If I'm the motion, what page is it on?
Um.
Oh, it's in the chat too.
It's in the chat.
Okay, thanks. I don't see it in my chat. There it is. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to authorize the the executive director to make a counter offer on 202 East Main Street and execute purchase agreement as discussed in executive session. Any discussion? Um, hearing none. Roll call please.
Board member Penemirov.
Yes.
Board member Greider.
Yes.
Board member Pescizo.
Yes.
Board member Byers.
Yes.
Board member Parry Miller.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clark.
Yes.
Motion carries there.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank both Kristin Mays and Jordan Ricklin for doing great work on behalf of Tora. Um, all right. The next item on the agenda is, I believe, uh, written communications. Are there communications attached to this one? No. Not that I see. Okay. And then adjournment. Thank you, everybody. We'll adjourn at eight twelve or eight oh six.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks all.